You're recording, got it. Okay.
One other up there, Steve.
All right, hello everyone, this is a regular meeting of the Norwich Planning Commission. Uh, we have a quorum here that I can see, so we're ready to get started. Can I have a, a motion on the agenda?
Don't move. Second.
All right, any discussion on the agenda for today? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda as submitted?
Aye.
Aye? Mary, you, yes? Okay, all right, we will move forward on the agenda. The, the only item on the, in correspondence, which is a note from Jeff Lubel, actually is in, is in reference to the first agenda topic, so we can, uh, we can use it and accept it, uh, as part of the conversation of the first agenda item. I didn't, it's not on the agenda here, but we should, uh, look around for public comment for items not on the agenda. Um, are there any hidden public members, uh, in, in your room there?
Well, there are not, no, there are not.
Okay, and on Zoom, Jeff Lubel, so I assume Jeff is here to talk about the first agenda item, not items not on the agenda, so. Okay, we can go forward. Um, so the, the first item, and I, I don't have a good sense calibrated of the members' background information on this topic. Um, in my head, it's, it's under the grand scheme of Act 250 redo, uh, and everything that flowed out of that, and, and 181, which is housing. Um, but I guess for starters, I'd, I'd ask, uh, Stephen maybe to give us some background. Um, the particular focus, I think, just to, to sort of light a fire under people and to make this real. Sometime around September, uh, the Regional Commission is gonna meet with us, and they're gonna have proposed land use maps. Um, and part of this process, we, within, Stephen can clarify this, I'm just trying to scare everybody to, to perk people up.
Okay.
Um, but part of this process is the Regional Commission, uh, being very active in creating land use maps for and with the towns. Uh, some, and then they sequenced it, so towns are going in a certain order, ours happens to be in the fall. Um, but, uh, so we want to be ready for that discussion, and we wanna give whatever input is appropriate before, during, and after, uh, because those land use maps then become quite important, uh, going forward.
So, yeah, are they gonna come to us with maps that they've already developed in, in, and is, what is the input from Norwich as they are coming up with this straw person, straw man?
Yeah, so that's, that's the right question, and maybe Stephen, if you can give us all some common background, and then we can bounce it around.
Sure, um, so, just to be clear, it's a, um, it's a future land use map, um, which all town plans and regional plans include whenever they're updated, so this is, you know, they sort of cast their eyes over the entire region and, you know, sort of classify land use into ten categories. But I mean, that's, the Regional Planning Commission's been doing this for as long as they existed, it's not, it's not something new. Um, what's new really with it is, um, s- sort of a, the, it, you know, i- an effort to, um, you know, create a statewide future land use map between all regions, so they're gonna share categories, um, which is, which is a new development, surprisingly, in the 21st century, that they have not yet done that in terms of the general classification. Um, and what is also new is that the newly created Land Use Review Board holds a hearing on these land use areas, a- and, you know, they make the final determination about them.
So, so the Nor- the Nor- Norwich doesn't make the final determination about the land, future land use plan for its own land, is that right?
We have our own future land use maps in our own town plan. Um, we can, I, I believe can provide, you know, comment and, um, steer the conversation in terms of how, you know, we'd like the region to see our town. Um, but ultimately, the Regional Planning Commission's gonna decide amongst those categories where they fall in the town of Norwich, and it has some upstream implications, uh, you know, there's a dramatic revisioning of Act 250, and there's also a dramatic sort of revisioning of, um, the state designations program, both of which I think Jeff Lubel can speak to, um, uh, quite intelligently.
Yeah, let's, I mean, it's okay to bounce around a little bit at the beginning here, and, and I, I want us to get some questions out on the table, so, but Stephen, just to be clear on one thing, you said that we're, we will be talking about future land use maps that are included in our town plan at such time that we revise the town plan, so that, uh, this, this exercise that goes on this fall and designates area, tier one B areas and so forth, and the future land use maps according to the ten categories. With that, um, that is then, uh, used by us when we revise the town plan? To, so that we consistently use the same categories and so forth?
Um, I don't, I don't, I'm, you know, I, I'm not sure if there has to be a one-to-one correspondence, I mean, I, I think right now, for example, our future land use areas are different from the future land use areas that the region has mapped for us at present. So I think you can deviate. We have some autonomy to create a vision for our own future land use. Um, but there are implications in terms of, you know, statewide programs.
So, to be, yeah, just a second, Jeff, one, one question, to be as simplistic as possible, all the, all the maps are GIS standard and they all roll up. Are our future land use maps going to be a subset of the Regional Commission maps and then the statewide maps? Uh, in, in almost a, you know, lockstep GIS sort of fashion? Or do we have totally separate maps that don't have to have that level of alignment?
Um, I think we have our own maps for future land use within our town plan.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, uh, having done this for a few decades, um, the, uh, I, I wanna get to Jeff Lubel, because my sense of what the Affordable Housing Subcommittee is suggesting is as a planning commission, we should proactively reach out to the RPC, see what they wanna do, because we're not on the same page, we may not be on the same page, but to the extent we can proactively reach out and work together, uh, synchronize our efforts, I, I think that's what, uh, what the Affordable Housing Subcommittee is suggesting.
Okay, can we, just to make sure we have the big categories identified, so there, there is a whole category which i- is gonna come up right away with, with the Affordable Housing Subcommittee about designated areas and tier one B and, and Act 250 review. Are there other large categories of this land use map discussion that we should at least have a placeholder in our heads for? Or is this really the big one, uh, for the next few months?
Uh, you know, I-
Like habitat, and, I mean, there were corridors, and, and you talked, Stephen, about the road, eight-hundred-foot roads, the rules were gonna change.
Infrastructure, cell towers, does that get in part of it? Solar, does it, energy?
I, I don't, you know, I, I, I don't think it's to the, that level of granularity, I think these are just land use designations. And it might be helpful, we can look at how, you know, the, the ten categories themselves and how they're defined. Um, we can look at the, I can bring it, share the screen, share my screen with the overview document, and we can sort of reference that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, I mean, I think the, the one that caught my eye also, other than the, um, uh, tier one B things relating to housing in Act 250 was the, um, I don't know what they call it, conservation or, or habitat protection and so forth. So, the, the, you know, that, tier, so tier three, that's a, that's a land, that's one of the ten? It, would you say Critical Natural Resource Areas is one of those ten categories?
I think the rules for tier three are still being worked out, the, in the future land use map, they, uh, differentiate between three types of conservation resources. Um, let me see if this presentation has a breakdown of those land use classes, uh, yeah, so. The, the tier system's gonna apply to Act 250 jurisdiction. There is a relationship between the tier one A, tier one B, doesn't, um, uh, land use classes for Act 250 and the state designation program, but all of these, all of these ten classes are gonna get rolled into either a tier, you know, tier one A and B, tier two and tier three. Tier three will probably be classified as, you know, the rural, general, agriculture and forestry, and just plain conservation.
Okay. I just want sort of big picture, and then we'll narrow down, but may, so, Jeff Lubel, if you wanna give us some background from the Affordable Housing Subcommittee and the, that whole subset of this topic?
Yeah, yeah, sure, um, so I, I think, um, a- a- as I understand it, there's kind of three main things happening here, one, uh, in the, with the future land use map, one is the mapping of these places that you see, you know, da- downtown village centers, plant growth areas, village areas, those are gonna be designated on the map. Um, and, and that, uh, immediately affects, you know, what the benefits that a community gets under the designated, uh, uh, programs in Vermont. So, um, in particular, you get, uh, if you're in a village area or a village center, you get priority access for affordable housing funding, get priority access for funding for wa- water and wastewater. Um, so it matters, right, how, how they choose to define that, and, and the, the whole village areas thing is new, um, and they seem to have a lot of flexibility to kind of define a very broad area, potentially as part of your village area. Um, the, the second part is the Act, uh, uh, 250, particularly tier one B, that's something, as I understand it, that the municipality has to request. Um, and so, um, I think, I don't know if at this meeting in September or at some subsequent date, but they're gonna come up to us and say, "Do you wanna request that any of these designated places be a tier one B area?" Uh, it also has to, uh, have, you know, wastewater, uh, public wastewater system or the, or soils that have capacity for public wastewater, so that kind of limits, you know, the areas that could be designated as tier one B. The, the third thing that is, they're gonna be sort of allocating, uh, their, their housing targets to different municipalities. I don't know if that's part of the future land use map, or if that's just sort of separately, but, um, and I don't think it matters, 'cause I don't think there's any penalty for missing it, but that's, I just wanted to flag that, uh, for your consideration.
Can, do we have, I, can everybody, or does everybody understand what tier one B means, or can somebody, uh, give us some background on that? 'Cause we're gonna reference that multiple times here. Jeff Lubel, you wanna give a try at?
In the deck, yeah, it's in the deck.
If it's in the deck, I would just pull up the, uh, yeah.
Okay. And then that allows, the, the meaningful piece of it is that it allows a limited, it reduces Act 250's jurisdiction in those areas, which makes it easier to put in housing, is that?
In particular, larger numbers-
It says in the document, yeah, it says in the document that it, uh, provides up to fifty units on ten acres or, or, or less, or fewer, um, so some significant amount of, of housing is available. At least that's according to slide nine on the deck that's part of the, um, our, our package.
Does that, if, if it was, it allows up to fifty units on ten acres, does that, i- it still would have to come under our zoning regs and subdivision regs, right, it doesn't, it doesn't usurp those? If you couldn't get fifty, you'd have to do a PUD or whatever and, and get it to meet our criteria.
Yep.
Okay.
It's, it's simply an exemption from Act 250 permitting for housing in tier one B and tier one A areas. I think, you know, commercial development would still require Act 250 review, um. So, it, it li- it limits the, the jurisdiction, but doesn't eliminate it entirely in any of these districts, um.
Is it true, just to simplify our lives, that we're not gonna be talking about tier one A in Norwich?
No.
Okay.
No, and, you know, it did, we do already have, you know, getting on the sort of designation side, we do have a village designation, um, but, you know, we, we might wanna look at it in a different context, it's fairly small, um, just sort of-
Village center, ju- just to be really clear, it's a village center, right?
Um.
And the reason it matters is there's a new category called village areas, that's, that's why I'm ma- trying to distinction.
Yeah.
I, I've just got a quick question, is, is there any meaning to compact housing development, as it says in the deck, plotted in exactly what it says? Fifty units and ten acres or less, wait, sorry, when it gets into the, that page?
Tiered one, yeah, that's, that's-
It's just, it's just a, yeah, it's just a description, compact housing unit, there isn't some sort of meaning that I don't understand through that.
No, I mean, these are all sort of fully fleshed out in statutes, um, you know, the criteria is qualified, but I think they're just, yeah, I don't, I don't think there's really, um, meaning to compact, other than suggestion.
Yep.
Jeff?
Yeah, I think what's important to consider is that this is all, although there is some legislative basis for this discussion, there are no rules in place, and the rules need to be written. Uh, so at this juncture, given the density that the RPC is thinking about for Norwich, um, we don't have a tier that is going to comport with what they're thinking about.
Can you expand, can you expand on that? What, where, where are you getting the, the information of the density they're expecting from us?
So, other public settings and committees where the RPC is talking about their allocation of units by town.
A housing target.
Housing target, so the, the hundreds of units that may be placed in Norwich cannot be accommodated. So, so there's a, there's a big time conflict between, uh, whatever legislative initiative there may be, what the RPC is striving to do based on their legislative pressure, uh, and then the, the vast conflict with our zoning. So, to, to come back to this, we had to sync as soon as possible, but let me come back to the question of tier one B with respect to Act 250 jurisdiction, so that, in, in, uh, uh, White River Junction, uh, or Hartford, there is a growth center designation that addresses uh, Act 250 jurisdiction modifications, although it remains, there are things like ag soils, deer yards, slopes, and so forth, that are, that are able to be mitigated in the review process. So what's gonna come out of this, in theory, is, to the extent the RPC says, "This is where we want housing", and the communities agree, then the rules are gonna have to, to change in, in the Act 250 realm to expedite review. I can, I can cite specific properties, but it doesn't matter, there's a crap load of review stuff in the ten criteria, sprawl, uh, y- you know, ag soils, wetlands, all of the above, that are gonna have to be addressed, that have not been addressed in the context of what the, what the RPC's, all RPCs are thinking with respect to this, to the state growth plan.
And I think that, so, wait, let me, let me follow up on that first, so, uh, two things, um, on the, so the Act 250 criteria, to the degree to which a tier one B area will be, um, w- will be held to lower standards or, or to lesser Act 250 review on all of the criteria of Act 250, that is not yet determined, the exact-
None of this is determined.
Okay.
This is in a, this is in a writing, a rewrite or a writing process as a function of the legislative, uh, what's the right word? Uh, initiatives and stretch and hocus pocus that's going on right now.
Okay, so that was, that's my, that was my first question, so that's a work in progress, so to speak. Um, the housing target for Norwich that you're referring to, is that uh, how solid state, what is the source of that, and is that just numbers at the state level that are very roughly allocated, or, or how far along is that?
The RPC has disclosed to the, uh, to, to our commissioner and alternate what those numbers are, and for reasons I'm not aware of, they haven't been disclosed to the town, but they need to be. Having said that, we need to engage the RPC from my perspective as soon as possible, say, "What, what are y'all thinking? And how can we align or not and move forward together?"
Well, our alternate is sitting here, so what have you heard, Stephen?
Um, nothing specific, absolutely nothing specific, a lot of sort of, um, you know, hints and nods towards, it's a, it's a huge number that they're looking in terms of, uh, you know, obligations from municipalities in terms of housing, but, you know, I, I think the, you know, the sort of hints and nod indicate that, you know, they don't even believe it themselves, and, I mean, it's, the Two Rivers Regional Plan, the two elements that have been put on pause are the future land use map and the housing element. And I, you know, from, as far as I can tell, the future land use element is sort of taking priority, you know, we'll get, they'll get that shaped up. And that will inform the housing element. I mean, all of these places need to be designated.
Hey, hey folks, I've seen this in writing, let's just get them here to, to fess up and own up, and let's, let's see what we can do together.
Well, they're coming in September.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna see what we, before, yeah, Jeff Lubel.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, just encourage us to think broadly, if we could, about these designations, and it's really important to separate out the Act 250 from the designated places, because we don't have to designate any place for Act 250 for one B that we don't want to, right? That's just like, we have to submit a request, right? So the first step is to designate the places. The benefits of designated places is you get access to a bunch of funding, uh, if you want it, right? Like, you don't have to apply for it, but like, you know, um, so, thinking, for example, maybe the entire, you know, uh, uh, fire district that's served by water, maybe that should be a village area, right? You know, it's part of the village se- it, it's not the village center, we have a village center, our village center could be a little bigger, right? And then the village area could be basically the denser part of Norwich, you know, and maybe even along Route Five over to meet Hartford, right, you can imagine that this is the area, right, where, where we're expecting more growth, right, and not the rural areas, and, um, if it could be some benefit in just signaling to to the, to the commission, to TRRC, that we're interested in a broader in defining these broadly, and then you can have a separate conversation about which of those areas you wanna designate for Act 250, you know, what, tier one B, if you qualify, again, you have to have the soils, we don't have water, and we don't have wastewater, so you're not gonna qualify if you don't have the soil, so that, that, just, just to kind of flip, note that.
So, to be, to be clear, we, we could request, um, well, let, distinguish between a village center or a village, uh, dis- and a tier one B, so that, uh, if we asked to, if we were gonna expand our village center, does that necessarily, is that the same as tier one B, or is that-
No, no, so, so there are two, the, the important thing is they're two separate pieces, they're related, but they're separate. The first question is, it, the first question is, 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 is to designate the places, and someone just had that, you had those designations, right?
What, what does a village center designation do for us, for example?
Correct, a village center, um, is, uh, gets, you could see, I, I have a document, I can share my screen if you want, but it says you get these benefits, right, you get access to priority funding for affordable housing, priority funding for water and wastewater, you know, uh, priority funding for planning, and there's a few other things, right? And, and then you get the, and then, um, right, and then you could also, the same applies to village areas, uh, certain village areas, there's like three different subcategories within village areas, but the middle one um, gets you those things as well. So, and that's not the s- same thing as a village center, right, the village area is a broader, you know, idea, so I, I would say first step is, what should the designations be, and what are the benefits of, of, and drawbacks, right, and what are the statutory limitations that they have to think about? And, and, and you can dig into the details, and I, I can share that with you, or Stephen can share that with you. But then, then you have the separate question after that, is, okay, now that we've designated these places, which, if any, do we wanna request tier one B status for?
Okay, that's helpful, Mary, this is a good slide, too.
Yeah, no, I, I was looking at the slide earlier, and I was wondering on that top line, are those, are those areas designations that have been in place for a long time, or are they new?
But, i- these are the new ones.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause from my perspective, it just looks like we've gotten a little bit of alphabet soup of, "Let's figure out a whole lot of ways to continue to, you know, quite frankly, change the nature of the town, allow more development", um, you know, whether you call it a, you know, a village center, a village area, it all means, "Let's just keep building", uh, you know, because we can then, you know, have access to money, so we can do, you know, infra- I, I don't know, I mean, I think fundamentally, we have to think about, what do we want our town to look like, and, and how do we make that the vision that we have for it, but this looks a bit like alphabet soup to me with, you know, a lot, a lot of things that mean that, oh, well, we'll just, you know, I mean, Aaron, you just said, or, or maybe it was Jeff, I don't know, but, um, don't recall, but like, "Let's just expand into Hartford on Route Five", I, that is not something I'd like to see, I think it's been very much a part of Vermont, that we have very specific areas, let's, let's just take the, you know, Stephen, you said we have a small village, I, I, tell me why it's small, why it should be bigger, and, you know, and so I, so I guess I just think fundamentally, what is the, you know, what do we wanna get out of this, and if, if it's just to get at, if it's just to get at state cash, then I think that's, um, I, I don't think that's a good bet.
Mary, to that, that point, I'm, I'm gonna go to the front of this, uh, um, presentation here. And, you know, I think really, a- all of this is, you know, to protect the sort of original idea of maintaining-
Right, that's, that's what I was gonna say, that box right there, the, the point is, they're trying to get growth to go in compact locations, I mean, that, that's the, the, the highest level thing is, to my mind, at least on the housing side, the highest level statement is, "We need more housing, but we wanna put it in, follow that same compact village rule that we've been, goal, that we've been talking about forever." That seemed, and, and so they crank up the housing numbers, and something's gotta happen, but it's still trying to stick within that goal of compact development, Jeff?
Yeah, I don't necessarily have a problem with that statement, um, but let's, let's, uh, stretch it in, in multi-dimensional context to make it real, right? So, um, I, I don't see this as alphabet soup so much as, uh, you know, doing this for so long, uh, the state and the RPCs are finally saying-
Uh, the state and the RPCs are finally saying, where are the job centers? You know, where do we, where do we shop? Where do we live? Where do we work? How do we synchronize all that?
Yep.
And if we can integrate that with this, this, uh, this marketing statement in the green box there, wonderful, because, because that's kind of how this community used to be, uh, back in the old days. Now, the reality is, you know, we, we're in the middle of a micro poland, you know, if you look at here, Brannenburg, uh, Bennington to an extent, uh, St. John'sbury, Barry Montpelier, Burlington. Where are the job centers? So if the RPC reasonably said, hey, look, Norwich needs to accommodate somewhere between three and six hundred units, based on the, on the real need, based on that green statement, it's probably valid. Uh, I'm, I'm not saying what I think, I'm just talking about what the planning needs are. Uh, so I want to go back to what Jeff Lubel said and agree with largely what he said, which is you, you know, Act, Act two fifty is, uh, is, is a growth control mechanism. That's all it is. So, so let's throw that off the table. The broader question is, uh, since the, since the threshold criteria for Act two fifty for housing are i- i- is anything more than nine units? Uh, or, uh, any commercial development on a parcel of, in Norwich as a zoning town, ten acres or more? Um, uh, what are the implications? And so if we said in this area, because we have, uh, enormous transportation access, because we have water supply, because we have an enormous potential for wastewater based on surrounding municipalities that have a crap load of, uh, capacity, among other things. We could designate these areas i- in terms of one B. Now, I'm, I'm going to roll back a little bit. I talked to Allison Clarkson and Rebecca Holcomb about uh, what I think is the fraud of a legislature saying, yeah, we're just going to designate benefits for housing for communities that have water and wastewater. So the twelve that exist in this state, it's, it's just, and I'm being a little facetious, but it, but it's not true. It's not real. So, so broadly thinking, as Jeff Lubel said, to the extent there are areas in this community that might accommodate greater housing, where are those areas? And that's what we should be looking at, uh, in, in synchronizing the RPC to me sooner than later.
Yeah, I.
So, big picture, the, the kinds of things we're talking about, like level of growth in Norwich, do we want to do something with River Road or Route five south or, you know? Those are big planning issues, big planning topics. We're not, we are not going to be wanting, the, the whole town will not be ready to make decisions relative to that in September or, you know, in a few months. That, that sounds to me like a significant.
We're trying to, we're trying to lay the groundwork for planning with respect to a future town plan consideration, which will involve multiple public meetings, among other things. The broader question is, okay, the RPC, the state, where are y'all thinking about? You know, where, where development should, and how can we accommodate that if we can?
Yeah.
What is, what's the timeline for, um, requesting, requesting one B?
Probably the end of twenty six for us. We are last in, the Two Rivers is one of the last regions that are going to report to the L, to the new land use review board. They will hold hearings. I think we're not looking until, you know, late twenty six, early twenty seven before
Okay.
Final last.
Okay, that's, that's good to have in mind.
I, I will share with all of the members this full document. This is just a condensed version of it. And it sort of lays out the timeline for all of the work that needs to go to tier three, tier one B. So it's, it's a, it's, it's a really excellent document laying out the sort of next three years and the changes.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a, it's, it's the, it is the slides for the VLCT webinar that they held a few weeks ago. So we can probably get the, uh, the video for that as well, if people want to watch. Uh, it's, it's an Act two fifty staff member guy walking through the presentation. Um, but yeah.
I, I think, uh, I want to just emphasize kind of what, what Jeff Goodrich said. Um, we're not making decisions for the town. We are just keeping our options open, right? By, by making sure that the regional land use map will support whatever we want to decide. You still need to have a decision about the zoning. That's a future decision, right? You can have. Um, but if you don't have these designated places, then you won't have the ability, if you want to, to, to accommodate growth the way that you want to accommodate it. So it also gives you the ability to lower speed limits below twenty five miles per hour. Um, there's.
Does it do anything about dog, dog regulation?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Anyway, there, there's something called the Better Connections Grant. I mean, there's, there's, there's just a lot of, uh, opportunity. But again, you don't have to apply for it. You don't have to use it, right? But if you don't, if you don't, if you're not designated, then you don't have, you, you're basically limiting your options in the future. What we want to do is preserve our options, you know, and as Jeff said, let's figure out what are the general places where we want to accommodate development? Then let's, like, we could figure out the details later and let's make sure that we, we keep our options on the table. That, that's the main thing that's going on.
Is, uh, is the, you know, say the housing, um, allocation, which reminds me a little bit of the solar allocation, um, by town. And i- it's a number, um, that then has to be weighed against or runs up against the realities of each town, whether it's the, the, the soils and the, and the topography and so forth. But it's also that you need to find developers. I mean, it's not like the town is going to build two hundred units of housing. Um, the, the whole project would have to come together and it would have to pass all the, all the other town and state regulations. So, um, I, it can sound like a big scary deal to have, oh my God, it's an allocation of two hundred units, but, uh, I, you know, realistically, how the heck would that happen? Mary? You're muted.
I, I, I mean, I think that's exactly right. Realistically, how does it happen, Yan? We saw how it happened. We saw what happened. So if you open up, if you open up, you know, I mean, keep your options open like the town did in the current town plan by saying everything is available to be, you know, cut down and developed for solar, everything is, except for, except for steep slopes unless they do. So look at, I don't, I, I think we need to be really clear about what we want. I don't think that we just say, let's keep all our options open. Because I do think that if we don't know what we stand for, someone else will define it for us. And I love the little thing in green, but it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a soundbite. It's a soundbite that then talks about, you know, it's a soundbite. And then after that, everything is okay. Well, you know, now we're going to have this designation, which will get rid of two fifty. It'll have this designation, which will allow us to do fifty houses in a ten acres. I think Norwich has to decide what it wants, rather than saying, let's just keep all our options open and see who shows up and wants to, uh, you know, do whatever they want to do. And it's not clear. You, you want to open up the fire district. It's not going to be clear. It's going to go for affordable housing. Because the cost of construction right now, there's not going to be any affordable housing in Norwich.
Well, and I think, uh, to that point, I would, I would agree and the, the solar is a good example, but housing too. And I, I think to Jeff's point about keeping your options open, I think we want to keep, keep the correct thoughtful options open. So the default solar across the whole town, I think, you know, you wouldn't want default, uh, large scale housing across the whole town. You, so the, the idea of keeping your options open should be thoughtfully done and narrowed down to what really where you, where you want it. Because we're not in control of which developer steps up and proposes which project two, three years from now. But if we leave the options open in a less than thoughtful way, then, uh, we have to be careful what might show up in our doorstep. And so.
Yeah. It, it's just really important to remember that you, that this is not a zoning decision. You still have control over the zoning, right? So, so nobody is, this decision does not change the zoning. It does not allow a developer to build something that is not accommodated by your zoning. It's really important to remember that the town still controls the zoning, the town still controls, you know, what grants it wants to apply for. So I just want to remember that piece.
Yeah, yeah.
But it does, but it does, Jeff, it does, it does though, uh, allow the town to, if, if you change the designation and you make yourself more available to infrastructure funding, it, it allows you to create a, an environment that will be more attractive to developers. So it's, 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 it is a statement. It is a leaning. It's directional. And I think we just have to make sure that that direction is what we want. Because if you take all of the firelands and you, you know, and you, uh, yeah, you haven't changed the zoning, but you've done everything to, you know, to make it possible to do that, then someone's going to, someone's going to have a great plan and it'll, it'll change. And, you know, I think we got to be, we have to be intentional. And not just, let's just make it available and see what happens.
Yeah, it's a, it's a waiting function among others, but it does change waiting uh, in certain areas. Did I see Bob's hand up?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to say, I, I, I think to echo your point, it is, it is a very intentional process is what the appearance is. To me, this isn't, everything is open to every development. It's, it seems like we're starting sort of a planning exercise in planning commission, which I think makes a lot of sense. Um, you know, rather than sitting back and let this, say like, I can imagine twenty, thirty years back, oh, just a slow accretion of you know, two acre plots, you know, everything converting to, you know, can we, do we sit back and let it all turn into say, two acre houses, multi-million dollar things? Or do we have a, a slope of plan for, uh, what makes sense? Uh, of particular areas, not all areas, but a few particularly thought out areas that could support and and maybe even, uh, decrease the pressure on, uh, on the, the need for housing.
Yeah, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, uh, uh, I, I, I appreciate many of Mary's comments, but I, but I think we're not talking about a townwide paradigm. Uh, just to be very clear. So what are the areas? So to the extent the RPC says, as a micro pol, Norwich is one of the four core towns in the micro pol. Uh, as a planner, Norwich has responsibility to, uh, you know, to the micro pol. Norwich may say you can all go do whatever you want to yourself. Uh, we don't agree. Uh, nonetheless, to the extent, uh, we, we, we do want to consider how we relate to the micro pol and what are those areas? And in the mid nineties, that, you know, as a member of the planning commission, we said, you know, the, the village district, not the fire district. There's a big distinction. So where, where's the water system? Where's the water system? And it's limited. Uh, where, where the, where the transportation hubs, the corridors, all of these things relate to, to, the regional state planning considerations. It's pretty limited. It's, uh, you know, it's River Road. It's, uh, maybe Route five north of, of it, maybe Route five south in, in the village, uh, simply. It's not a big area. Uh, so if we're talking about the top of Brag Hill, no, that's not what we're talking about. And, and I, and I think, uh, I, I think it's important to understand talking points and I, I agree with Mary's key point there. And one of my key points is I sneeze or, or instead of saying, because then I've been, because then tight to someone, I've been saying cow flatulence. Cow flatulence. So I, I just want to, you know, embrace the proper talking points as we embrace this legislative paradigm.
So can we back up from when Two Rivers uh, officially comes to talk to us about these maps, which from what I hear is September-ish? So we may want to talk to them before that, less officially or whatever. But what do we need to do? Because if this is the July meeting and we don't have special meetings, we have July, August, and maybe a September meeting, which is the one they come to. What do we need to be doing and thinking about in the next couple of meetings?
I mean, I think, I think it would be helpful to, you know, have the members familiarize themselves with the future land use map process. There's a document that sort of explains each one of these, these, uh, designations, these categories, um, and how they sort of fit in the Act two fifty uh, genre and in the, uh, state designations. Um, that, I mean, thi- this is the process is, that's happening right now for the region. Two Rivers is doing it. We need to influence that outcome if we so choose. Um, so some familiarity to that and also, you know, review this, the full document, this full presentation for the timeline.
What can we get? I agree with that. And then in terms of the um, uh, kind of a preview of what Two Rivers is thinking, what, what can we get? Whether it's maps or housing allocations or just, can we get any hint of what's going to be shown to us, uh, what's going to be put on the table when this happens?
Well, I, I, you know, it can't hurt to call them, you know? I mean, you're the chair of the planning commission. They will definitely take your call.
So I, I mean, I'm happy to, you know, give Peter Gregory a call. We can do it different ways. We could say, you know, uh, I'll just, I will give him a call and act, you know, I can act very, uh, shall we say, open or clueless and ask questions and, and see what he, what he says. Because some of this, this, I mean, I'm surprised, I, this is the first I've heard of, of housing allocations of big numbers. That, that's news to me, uh, tonight. So I'm perfectly happy to call up Peter and say, hey, I'm just curious, what's going on with that? Uh, and why, why don't we got to talk about it?
I, 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 I hear that. I mean, you know, I've, I've spoken to Kevin, Peter, a few, Ken, Kyle recently. I think the emphasis on the housing piece is, is coming behind this process. That's my sort of read on.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, Yan, I, I've hinted at this for five or six months and, and, and I'm, without being specific on purpose, I understand that, that it might go over our collective heads. And I'm glad we're here.
Yeah. And also there, there's a very real chance that the future land use map for the town of Norwich for, you know, in twenty twenty five is no different than the future land use map from eight years ago.
Okay, so, but when you say the housing element will lag, uh, the housing specific, say, the, the allocation and so forth will lag. Um, that means though that this, what you have up there, the, the categories, the, the the future land use map with these categories and the beginning of conversations around the tier one B, that's what will happen first? What, what happens, what happens this year if it's not the housing specific allocation stuff?
Well, I mean, Two Rivers is going to complete their regional plan, which is essentially complete except for the land use element and the housing element. So the, I mean, they will complete their, um, you know, their regional plan.
Okay. And then our, hmm, go ahead.
So, you know, so, you know, our, our future land use element, our land use element in our town plan and our housing element needs to be informed by, by that when we take that up in twenty twenty seven, end of twenty six.
Hmm.
I've heard rumors that, you know, the housing numbers are wild, but, you know, I don't have any specifics. And I don't know if they do either, really.
Well, and it's, it still comes down to the, uh, the reality of the situation. You can, you can put whatever numbers you want on Norwich. Uh, but simply saying Norwich, you're, you're in the middle of, of that whole region. You've got a responsibility. We expect three hundred and twelve units of housing. That doesn't wave any magic wand that makes it happen. So.
We're never going to qualify as a tier one A. There's no geography in the town of Norwich that would support that. So, you know, I think the, you know, the housing elements are going to focus on, you know, those areas in the region of which there's several.
Um, so to that point, just a question, is it valid to expect Hartford will have tier one A areas?
Yeah.
They already do.
They already do.
Yeah.
The center designation, whatever, six or. Yeah, the center designation, whatever, six or seven, it's a tier one A designation.
Yeah, yeah, and I, you know, I think, does Randolph?
No. No, in fact, they're, what they did at the interstate interchange negated all of that.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, the region's growth area is, is Hartford. There are, you know, our next door neighbor.
Right.
You know, but we also have to sort of look at. There, you know, it's, it's gonna be a good exercise in looking at the region as a whole. But, you know, I think right now the, the task would be to really familiarize ourselves, the process of how these things are categorized. And be ready to sort of influence. You know, be influential when they come to present what they're thinking.
Yeah, Jeff, I want to defend the regional thinking per se here. So, so let's say hypothetically, you got, uh, I don't know, fifty thousand jobs next door. And, uh, you know, we're looking at, uh, twenty thousand houses that are short. So it makes sense as a planner to say, you know, circle, circle, circle concentrically. If you're closer, you gotta have more houses. Uh, you know, and I, and I, I don't mean to speak so simply, but I think we need to. And, and the firm numbers that I've seen in writing are a function of the RPC saying, okay. Concentric circles, if you're closer, you ought to have more houses. It actually makes sense.
Right, yeah.
It can be called or not, it is a separate issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that is, that is probably the. The, one of the single most important planning and growth discussions for Norwich. Has been and will continue to be, which is as the, as this whole thing grows around us. Uh, and the pressure keeps building, um, to what degree are we, uh, you know. A little green expensive oasis in the middle and, and to what degree are we, uh. Getting higher density because we're near the middle. I mean, it's. Yeah, I, I, I have my own thoughts and, and other people do, but that, we're gonna have. Some significant conversations about that as we redo the town plan certainly.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so if we say, let's just be very specific, we can. Ask everybody to do their homework and Stephen, you can, you can pass out more detailed information and if. Other people have other good resources, let's get them out and, and I will. Ask everybody to put in the time to get up to speed on this, assuming we've done that in the next month. Um, what should we have on the agenda for the August meeting on this topic?
Well, not, not to be, uh, uh, flippant in any way, where are the areas? To the extent we might accommodate development, where are those areas? And I don't think it's gonna change from nineteen ninety-five to now.
So do, do you, you think we are? We need to or we could be ready to, uh. Have that kind of a conversation in a month to, to, as a planning commission, say, you know. Here's, here are the areas we're talking about.
Yeah, and I think everybody in Norwich could have that conversation in mind. We're not gonna do this on Willie Hill. We're not gonna do this, uh, you know, uh, as we, uh, on one thirty-two, we're not gonna do this on Bragg Hill. There's only a very limited area in our town where we're gonna do this, and it was all laid out in nineteen.
Yeah, and we should do that in the, the context are these land use categories. I mean, we don't have any area that will, can be designated as a planned growth area. There's no wastewater, if, there's no infrastructure. Transition infill areas are, you know, vague at best. So, I mean, we're really looking at like, what is our downtown? What are our village area? And what are the rural areas that we seek to conserve? And everything in between there is gonna be tier two or no, without a state designation.
I would go to neighborhood for one B. I, I wanna stretch a neighborhood a bit.
Yeah, neighborhood. Hmm, so, you know, the village neighborhood.
As part of this, so to your point, I think it's, it's always good to do both sides of the equation. So that if we're thinking about realistically where in town is, i- is it at all? Desirable or plausible to have higher density, then we should also have the. Kind of the rural conservation piece, the where in town is it, might we, do we? In this process, ask for a tier, tier three designation? Or, or we just use the land use categories of rural conservation and so forth?
The, we're, we're just gonna use the, the categories. The, the rule set for tier three are. Out in the future, they're, they're being developed right now. It, it, and you know, this, the, the larger document that I drew from talks to all of that. Uh, it gives the specific person on the land use review board who's in charge of tier three rule setting. So, yeah, time for that, um.
I just, I remember, it's, it's also from the, you know, from the solar discussion, it was a good lesson to, to, you know. If you wanna talk about where to put it, then talk about where not to put it. And, and you do a push me, pull you thing and, and it's a more balanced conversation. Um, and then just sitting down and saying, where are we gonna designate higher density? And that's all we're gonna talk about. Uh, so I think we can have them both in mind, Jeff.
Just to be clear, that if we're not designating an area. The Act two fifty provisions don't change and you get hammered and beaten to death everywhere else.
It's, it's gonna get worse the further you go. Probably, I mean, the tier two with the long driveway.
Yeah, eight hundred feet, well, yeah, I'm not sure that's tier two, it's everywhere.
No, it's gonna just be tier two.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we, we're, we're an hour in and I wanna, I wanna have a block of time for the, for the next. Item. So I think if we, uh, commit to, to doing some homework and getting some background, then we can. And do people want me to reach out to Peter Gregory and just get a sense of?
Yes.
So that in August, I, at our August meeting, I'll come and say, okay, I talked to Peter and. This is the story or here's something I learned from him or, or I just confirmed, you know, things. If people are fine with that, then I'm happy to do that.
We planted, yeah.
Will do. And just to, before we close that, is there anything to be learned? Like you said, we're, we're. Uh, certainly not the first town going through this process. Is, is there one you could point us at? Into Rivers that is already a few months ahead of us and is, is going through this? I just, I don't have a good picture of, you know, are they gonna show up with a great big map of Norwich and plop it on the table?
Yeah, I mean, there, there is, there is a calendar, there, there has been a schedule for, and it's been sort of ongoing since the beginning of the summer. So I can pull that out and share it with you guys.
Yeah, if you could, I just, I would be curious if they did Sharon or they did Stratford or whatever, then. Let's, let's find the minutes or the video for that and put that on our list of resources.
Yeah, let me, let me, I can do that.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think it's, it's a good, it's a definitely a, an important conversation and I just wanna, it. This is part of what I wanna ask Peter, cause I wanna be clear on. Is this, is this flipping the sort of the tail, the, the dog and the tail and, you know, between regional and town? Uh, priority, uh, is this shifting that with the land use review board and, and these? Commonalities, are we getting a little more top down, uh, or, or not? Uh, and I'm, I'm curious what, what Peter will say to that. It feels like it at, at a distance here without, without seeing it in action. It, it feels like that, but, uh, well, let's see. Okay. Good, um, so the next, next one again, and this is a kickoff of the next. Some number of months of work, um, and we should, you know, we. Not rest on our laurels, but acknowledge the fact that we just got a, a good piece of work done with the proposed. Zoning regs, um, and so the question now is, all right, let's. Um, let's think about our next priorities and I would hope, especially given now that we've learned. How much work we can get done with our staff member here, um, that we. Uh, plan on doing a couple things in parallel, right? So that we can do. The next round of zoning regs and this kind of work on the town plan and, you know, what can we do on, on other projects? But anyway, let's, we don't have to pick one because that's all we can do. I don't, we, we shouldn't pick five or we won't get anything done, but. Um, let's, uh, let's be realistic and, uh, and see what our priorities are. So the, the ones that are in the. Agenda are ones that we've talked about in the past. Um. And I know I'm just saying this because Christian, uh, when he said he couldn't be here, he put in a, a strong vote. Of support for capital planning, um, and. Then, so when you say, uh, five A, Stephen, when you say amendments to land use regulations. Are you talking town plan or the next round of zoning regs and subdivision regs?
Uh, zoning regulations.
Okay, okay. So that, that would be round two of, uh, the things that we parked. Uh, or deeper dive issues on the regulations, um, capital planning. Um. So before we dive into this, uh, two things, if you could give us background on what that municipal planning grant. Uh, review piece means, and is there anything we need to do relative to our previous piece of work? As far as I know, the select board is doing their hearing two weeks from tomorrow. Um, and I mean, I'll be there to answer questions, but, um. I think we've, we've birthed that and unless it. Uh, you know, boomerangs back to us, we're, we're done with that. Is that correct?
I think so, yeah. I think, um, you know, we, we're, we're at the legislative stage. Um, thinking the whole during and, um, you know, take a decision on adoption. Um.
Okay.
I do, I do think there remain some. I wouldn't say, or, or important topics that we didn't get to in the first round. Um, I mean, we touched on the shoreline protection overlay district. We touched on the, um. Maybe I touched on it a bit more, but sort of consolidating our flood hazard regulations a bit.
The, our language. Right, right now, you're listing things for five A, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm listening to things for five A.
Is there, uh, cause there's more than that and I probably have some in my notes and, and other people may have something in the notes. Can we consolidate those? Can you just be the, the focal and, and people can send you? So, so we will have a bucket that is the next bundle of regulation topics. So if people can go through their notes and send any of the ones. That we talked about that they parked, uh, the other one I would put in there was, uh, short term rental. Uh, we definitely talked about, but anyway, go through your notes and get those to Stephen and then we will have a category that is. Zoning regulation round two, and here are the six, eight, ten categories.
So, Jan, I, I wanna just agree without any further detail, there's a bunch of notes here. I wanna agree with Steve's, uh, emphasis on getting to this.
Yep. Getting to this category of work.
Yeah, next, next level of, of the dive, uh, without any further comment.
Yep.
And I, I think, as you said. Jan, we can do this in parallel. You know, we can have other, other working topics.
Right, because we're going to, we're clearly gonna have time spent on the topic we just talked about. The, the town planning, the L, L, uh, land use review board, that whole topic, so. We know that's gonna be going on and it's not gonna be the only thing we're doing, um, but it'll take time. Okay, um. Can you say, what's the background on the municipal planning grant?
Sure, the municipal planning grant is a statewide, um, fund of monies to, um. You know, planning commissions and municipalities across the state. It's generally, you know, sort of on the order of a half a million dollars, it gets distributed to about sixty municipalities every year. We've applied for a number of these. Um, you know, I think for approximately ten or eleven since two thousand. So, you know, we actively sort of sought out funding, um. In the form of this planning grant, a lot of it was used to sort of update municipal plans and bylaws in the past. We've done some studies, most recently was the density review study. Um, so, you know, I, I, I would like to. Avail ourselves of that funding, um, uh, Vince. Has some, has some, expressed some interest in looking at pedestrian safety. In the village center, which is a, um, idea that's been funded in other towns. So along the same lines. So I think my recommendation here is, um, you know, as a sort of separate stream. Anyone who's interested in pursuing some kind of municipal grant. Let's work together and, you know, we could work offline and come up with concepts, ideas that we'd like to. Um, you know, bring to the planning commission at large. This sort of timeline, the, the grant funding hasn't been released yet, it's gonna be released this month. Applications are due in September, late September, awarded early twenty-six.
Um, so, yeah, that was my next question. So applications do late September.
Yeah, and it does require a memorandum document from the select board. So, you know, we'd wanna, I'd wanna give them ample time. To consider that. So I think sort of July, uh, next two weeks into August, uh, sort of six week. You know, sort of research effort into if and what we wanna apply for makes sense.
Okay, so that, I mean, that's a fairly tight timeframe if we're trying to define something. Uh, tightly enough to ask for money and to get the select board involved. So it sounds like we need to narrow down. What we might wanna ask for pretty quickly.
Yeah, what I can do to sort of help that process would be to, you know, send you. I mean, there's a, a list that's been published of all the planning grants have been approved across the state, um. By region, so we can sort of, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty easy to look at the titles of what they're doing. And, you know, sort of get the context. And with the application form itself comes out. There's usually some thematic, some state goal that they're trying to achieve. So that, that will sort of inform it. Um.
Okay.
Steve, how big are these grants and, I mean, like, we have so much work that we're doing right now, you know, and so, so like, is this enough? Money that it's gonna actually pay to have somebody come in and get a, a chunk of work done, or is it just add another? Kind of project to our agenda when you're already stretched out too thin anyways?
Did, you know, the, the awards vary, but they're generally sort of like. You know, five figures, mid-five figures, you know, ten to twenty-five thousand. I think the total amount that you can get in consortium is sixty thousand, so they're not huge amounts of money. But they do sort of allow for, you know, consultants and, um, you know, outside third parties. Uh, fees and things like that, so, um.
So just as an example, I'm thinking it's on the list here, scenic inventory. Um, that's a chunk of work. It's, you know, we talked about having it be a totally community. Uh, you know, have everybody drive around and, and do things, but, uh, you know. If you had something to hang that on, if you, if you looked and said, look, it's twenty-two years old, we refer to it in various places. It's an important resource, it's a chunk of work, we do it, you know, is that? Is that an example of something?
That's exactly the type of work that the, this funding is for. And that would pay for, you know, all the, you know, the posters and the presentations and the public. And that would pay for, you know, all the, you know, the posters and the presentations and the public meetings, you know, aggregating that information. That's exactly what the planning grants are designed to do, the sort of
Okay, okay.
Extra effort work that volunteers can't necessarily do on their own time.
Yeah, Jeff?
Yeah, since everything out the village, outside the village is is scenic inventory anyway. I I'd like to agree with Vince and and look at something like a shared use use path connection to to Hartford, you know, Route Five South. There are weapons, there are other considerations that uh that, you know, an outside consultant could assist us with. We actually had a grant that, as I've said before, town manager decided to cancel. But you know, the notion of what's it gonna take today in terms of impacts and costs uh to to uh uh to facilitate that critical uh, you know, corridor connection.
Yeah, I mean, the municipal planning grant funded the Route Five study, for example, in twenty twenty one.
Okay, Mary?
Yeah, Jeff, I didn't understand what you meant when you said everything outside of some specific area is the scenic area. Because I don't, so I know that we've been talking about wanting to clarify more what is a scenic area. So could you help me understand what you meant by that and whether because it is a chunk of work we've been talking about needing to do for the plant, for the the plant, so.
Yeah, my, so so the current zoning in state state law basically doesn't allow anything outside our village. Uh we we don't have uh the 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 regulations, the law doesn't allow any development outside the village. Now, if you said.
So the reason, the reason that Yon was talking about is it becoming, uh it was become a big issue. If you want to do an enhanced energy plant and you're thinking about the solar issue, then you need to have a kind of designated, you need to designate where it can't be. And one of the things that they talk about is, you know, kind of going out and identifying that and having it be tied in so many, in many places have tied it to scenic and and have done more specificity around that because uh and it is very, I mean, it's a, it's an interesting task. I don't know how they approach it, right? Because there's a lot of judgment that's gonna be involved and a lot of Ella, kind of the high correlation between wealth and scenic, right, is there? So but I but I I think it is something that at least that there, it we've intersected on the energy side of it, of being of something of of value.
Well, I think just to jump in just a second, Jeff, that that what my point specifically is that it is currently referenced as a, you know, it is stated in the plan and, you know, that it's like ridgeline. We also say that uh scenic roads, you know, we we say we use it and it's twenty two years old uh and and hasn't been updated. So either we don't use it uh or we keep it uh current uh as a as a resource. Jeff?
Yeah, I I don't have a problem with the planning commission revisiting whether ridgelines make sense or what the scenic context is. Because I I don't see it as that complicated. As as far as the land use application of the term scenic, uh that's very different to me than what what whatever the energy concern may be. And and I think if there's an energy concern, it should be presented to the planning commission to focus on. My issue is if we're gonna go for a planning grant that's gonna produce meaningful benefit to our community, I'd like to do something like the Route Five South quarter in in with Vince. You know, where are the pedestrian uh, you know, areas, where are the areas in our community that we could benefit in terms of bike, you know, shared use paths, bike pedestrians, et cetera? You know, the town spent uh money on uh on on an outside, you know, third party and a Beaver Meadow road analysis. And I'm not trying to undermine the firm that did the work. I thought it was a total waste of time because what the town just did with the gravel uh y- you know, uh with 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 the gravel walking ways is something that's been on the table and on the table and on the table, it's finally done. So if we're gonna spend the money, public money, let's make it something that's beneficial to uh to something that's real.
Yeah, okay, just, so my last comment on the on the scenic inventory side is there, it's two separate things. One is a a resource that can be referenced for various planning reasons. And then the other is, how do you use it? Uh do you reference as the energy plan, do you reference it in the in, you know, well, how do you use it? So I think there's value, what'd you say, Steve?
In our land use regulations.
Yeah. So I think there's value in that resource document being available, able to be referenced and therefore you gotta put the thought into to Mary's point, it's not easy to to come up with the criteria and 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 have it be something, you know, meaningful, that's not completely fluffy and 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 not helpful, but it, that is separate from how you point to it in planning, from the planning side. Um, okay, so can I just clarify on the, because I'm hearing Vince uh interest in um in town safety? And then Jeff is talking specifically about a Hartford connector uh multi-use uh path project. Are those two separate potential topics?
Yeah, um I, you know, it's sort of subsequent conversations I've had with Vince. Um I think the framing that he'd settled on, we'd settled on was sort of master pedestrian plan for the village center. Um but I think what I recommend we do is, I mean, I hear the, you know, I hear scenic resources, a some kind of additional master planning that um is around pedestrian safety and you know, maybe we could extend it to Route Five South. So we have, you know, two topics. Why don't I do a little bit of background on each of them? And we can discuss at the the next meeting which one we want to take forward into an application or or not.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's
Yeah, I'd be curious. I mean, it sounds like if it really was a a functional uh Hartford connector, if you want to put it that way, that that you really could, it could be used for that for for biking and walking and so forth, then we'd need to have Hartford in the in the conversation, right? And I'm sure we did that as part of the previous thing because it got pretty far. Jeff?
Yeah, so so you know, Vince and I were talking about this collectively when we were looking at the infrastructure considerations. So how how does, how does a a a child in this community get get to uh Honey Meadow? How do you get there? How do you get on your bike? How do you walk? Uh same thing to the rec complex on Route Five South. How do you do that? These are key destinations for our community.
Yeah, yeah.
Did the Route Five South study not touch that?
Actually, no, that complex was developed sort of independently from it. So Hartford did a
I mean, because that was done in twenty twenty one.
Uh the
Which was sort of looking at mixed use development. I mean, the context is a little bit different.
No, it wasn't, it had nothing to do with the pedestrian thing. Uh so so the pedestrian grant that I recommended was the town manager that canceled it. But Hartford did a uh a shared use path from Wilder to Dethen Brook School. And then we tried to build on that to provide a connector into the community in anticipation of two thousand five uh rec field improvements out on Route Five South. So simply put, we've got a village, how do we get to Honey Meadow? How do we get to the rec fields on Route Five South?
Yeah, same manner.
Okay.
And I think by our next meeting, the application, the application form itself will be out, the guidelines.
Yeah, yeah, so if you could, I mean, that sounds like we we don't need to fish for more. That sounds like plenty of ideas, so if you can uh flesh them out a little bit so that we have something concrete to talk about, then obviously we're not gonna apply for three of them. So let's let's have something to look at that we can uh kick around and pick one. Um it doesn't mean we don't do the other, I mean, we're gonna, we just do it with different resources on our different timeframe. Uh if it's something that needs to get done. Okay. Um how about capital planning? Where where do we, how do we want to address that? Do we want to address that? Um how do we do that, you know, with select board and town departments in what order? That whole topic. Jeff?
Yeah, so the document Steve included was a pretty good document.
Yeah.
Uh and and you just nailed it, so uh uh I don't know how to get beyond the select board and staff. Uh basically, that document, it's wonderful that there's wonderful document that talks about, hey, y'all ought to work together, bring this about. Uh I don't know how to do that without uh select board and staff consent.
Well, that could be the, I mean, that could be the answer. Uh the answer could be uh to renew with the with the new select board contingent uh to renew our overtures. Because I'm clearly, you can tell by reading this, um one of the things you absolutely need to to even be able to do the capital, it's the capital plan and the capital program um is the facilities, the utility and facilities plan. That's like an enabler for the rest of it. And you can't do a utilities and a facilities plan without department heads being involved. It's pretty clear that the police and the fire and the roads and all that stuff have to be included. And so if that's a precursor or at least an a an essential part of this whole process, then for the planning commission to hang out and talk aspirationally about capital issues um is is kind of silly. I mean, I think I think we need to quite early go back to the select board and say, we think this is important. We have a significant amount of interest on the planning commission to do it right. And to do it, you know, with something like the utilities plan, it has to be this three-way activity of town manager's office, select board and planning commission.
So our town plan doesn't have a a chapter that covers facilities and utilities.
No, yeah, it doesn't have a capital, it does not have a capital plan element.
Yeah.
So so do you need a motion to go back to the select board and try again, Yon?
Um, yeah, we can, we can do it as a motion, but I think, I I mean, I think from from the people on the select board, I've talked to new members and and just general interest, I I think it has shifted. Um and then it's a question of pushing the priority. And uh so uh, yeah, whatever people think would help.
Consensus, I would be, try again.
You know, like I said, Chris Christians very into it. We we now have a finance committee for Pete's sake. We could, you know, there there are various um elements to this, but but somehow uh we need to get the select board on, it could just be the select board names, one of their members who's interested in it to to be the designated rep. Um it's gonna have to have the town manager or his designated rep because all the department heads are gonna get yanked into it. Um and you know, Christian's certainly willing to lead it up from the planning commission point of view, but we gotta get through one. Steve?
If if the town plan does not currently have a u- utilities and facilities element, shouldn't we be focusing on the work required to? I mean, do we want to open our town plan right now to write this chapter?
If that, if that would show intent and and drive the process kind of in a in a good way, then I don't have any trouble with that. What do people think? Jeff?
I I think this is long overdue and, you know, uh as I've said more than once, if I were a member of the staff and had all these uh, you know, willing volunteers, volunteers willing to help me put all this together, I would embrace it till the cows come home. It needs to be done. So you know, see, I have group planning, the budgets, the whole nine yards. If I could get volunteers to help me compile all that, it's a lot of work.
It's a ton of work. I mean, I think that's the, that's the big thing. And we think about, you know, rewriting the town plan that is gonna come up, the zoning, et cetera. How do we prioritize this and and will it matter? I mean, at the end of the day, will it matter in terms of getting things funded?
Well, I think that that is part of the point that is why the select board needs to be committed and involved and we need to get their pulse to say, yeah, clearly it comes up all the time. Now, the police department comes up and says, we want to replace cruisers once a year or whatever. And uh and they will go, oh, I, you know, this is our, yeah, they talk about things one at a time.
Right.
And bridges and culverts and and all this stuff. It it comes up in budget period and there's no context. And people say, wouldn't it be nice to have context year over year? Uh and then they make a few decisions for this year and go to the next. But you're right, Mary, I think the point is, would it be useful? To some degree, I think it's the most concrete, potentially useful part of the town plan. Uh it should be, I mean, you know, it's the one that you should look at every year whenever you want to spend more than ten thousand bucks. So, you know, I think we should push personally. I I think we should, and to to your point about the work, um if we offer up a certain level of energy, I know there will be complaints to say, oh, my God, the town manager's too busy and the department heads are too busy and they won't I I know that'll come up. Um but if we can just get, you know, even if we got one, one planning commission member, one select board member and heaven forbid, somebody on the finance committee that wants to do it. Um but if you had three or four people who really were willing to put some time in and said they were and committed to it, then I think you have a credible story.
But first, we need to understand what a utilities and facilities element is in a town plan.
Well, it's definitely spelled out in great detail in the in the statute. I mean, it it lists the things you're supposed to list, it, you know, and and the timelines and the and the amounts and then the priorities and where the budget comes from. I mean, it it's got a, it describes what that plan is. And it does sound like that is required. It's like you can't do the capital plan or the capital program without that. That that's the enabler that has to be in place.
Yeah.
From a statute point of view. Jeff?
Yeah, I I agree, Yon, but I I was, you know, I think at Hanover, Lebanon and Hartford, each of those communities has a capital improvement plan and the the way the communities look at, you know, here here are the elements. They submit the uh the town, so the the city submits, you know, the current uh goals to the the planning commission or planning board for prioritization and then it gets passed up to the council or the select board for consideration. So there's a uh there there, how do I say this? The way I'm seeing these three communities do this isn't about central control by the governing body with with the manager. It's a much more broad effort by staff and uh boards and community. So I go, what are we gonna do? How do we help you as opposed to this one thing at a time central control thing you addressed?
Yeah, yeah, because that was part of my question was, how do you unify it? How did, how do you integrate it? Um so that you you have all these various priorities from culverts to to roads, to sidewalks, to so forth and a certain amount of money uh per year. Um but so what you're talking about, Jeff, is that part of the planning commission's role in this can be to uh do some of that integration and unification and and balance, show it all so that you can say, oh, okay, here are, here are some obvious priorities, here are some things that we don't want to forget. Um and then put that back out to the to the select board. So so we bring it all together, make some sense of it and prioritize it and then give it back as a a thoughtful recommendation to the select board.
Yeah, but not without staff. It has to be integrated. You you know, I can't imagine being Brennan and coming here with no background with Norwich and trying to make sense of everything. It's 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 huge, there's so much stuff to look at. If you're looking at culverts and so forth. I I mean, the analogy for me, the allegory would be the transportation advisory committee that the regional planning commissions I, I mean, the analogy for me, the allegory would be the transportation advisory committee that the regional planning commissions address. Communities offer up to the TAC, you know, what are our, our primary D trans, DOT, federal highway projects? And then, uh, there, there's a prioritization about how they get funded and how they get, get embraced. Uh, it's, it's not the two rivers driving it. It's not one community driving it. Uh, but, but rather in this case, it would be, you know, we have a manager, we have a select word. What are all the things we need to contemplate? How do we support one another in that, in that pursuit?
It's, I mean, it's, I think it's a great idea, absolutely, and a function of a well-running planning commission. We just need to get it, uh, the town plan amended and adopted. Before we can have real meaningful conversations about who does that in the future. I mean, that, we have to at least establish.
So can we, is that a useful driver? A useful label, whatever, to, to hang some of this work on? If the planning commission said. We are going to kick off an activity to amend the town plan. To add a capital planning chapter or element. That is, you know, that is one of our priorities for the coming year. Uh, you know, is that a useful? Statement that, that we can then hang a lot of these, the next discussions on? Because it, it, it sounds concrete. We are going to amend the town plan.
I think it seems to me that we have to, if we're going to have this conversation.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't simply have a, uh. Okay, let's, we, we recommend having a subcommittee that the select board sets up to talk about capital plan. That that is missing something that, that you, if you want to have it as part of your town plan. You have to amend and add it to your town plan.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing here. So like. Yeah, like, like an enhanced energy plan or flood hazard regulations, you know, that, they need to be adopted. Before they could be acted on. So you can't, if I'm reading this correctly, you can't have a capital budget and program without that element in the town plan. So we need to take the decision if we're going to go through the adoption process. For this chapter. And I think that's a good exercise, you know, looking at what that chapter would look like.
Okay, so if, if we could, to your point about a motion, Jeff, I think it, I think it would be a very useful. Kickoff motion to say the planning commission. Uh, intends to amend the town plan, to add a capital planning element. And, um, will engage, uh, other town bodies, uh. As appropriate or whatever, some, something that really makes it concrete. So then I can go back to the select board and say. We opened up this can of worms. We want to help, but we need you.
All right, Young, whatever you just said is my motion.
Did you get it, Stephen?
Word for word.
Okay.
Just, I, I mean, I can, I, I'm just curious about something. I, in the presentation of the, uh, Two Rivers presentation. It has something that says about the plant, planning commission, uh, may create, uh, uh, a capital budget and program. For a period of five years, but I thought there was something. I thought there was some level of state requirement for a town to have it, whether or not it came from planning commission. Uh, which maybe I misremembered, but I thought we had a conversation a few months ago, but there was some level of requirement. Towns are mandated to have that and we do not have one. So whether or not it's required that the planning commission makes it.
The statutes include that as part of our role.
Yeah, it's number, it's number six on our planning, municipal planning commissions can do. But I think, Bob, to your point, it's a, it's a may do in the, the old Dylan Stink thing. You can't do it unless they tell you you can do it. They tell us we can do it, but we have not taken them up on that.
That's a great slide right there.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is the, the path forward is to. You know, decide to do it by adopting. A utilities and facilities element in our town plan. And wha- whatever that entails, we can find out. I've. I'm sure there's models for it.
The, uh, the, the, the next town plan is due in June, sorry.
It's, uh, twenty twenty eight.
Twenty eight, okay.
Yeah.
But to the degree that we don't have this in it. Um, we, we don't have to wait for that to add it. I mean, we can amend the town plan anytime we want. Uh, just like if, if we want to do an enhanced energy plan, it doesn't mean we're not going to have to wait until twenty twenty eight to do it. We can propose amendments to the town plan. Some people do it as a rolling amendment. Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I, I guess I was thinking, if, if the, uh, if the town plan was to, if a medical town plan was to owners to do quickly. We're just saying that we, we shall include it in the next town plan and this is our process of getting there, uh, is developing.
Well, if we don't start now, we ain't going to conclude it.
Yeah, it's a select board used to having public here. So I think it's fine. It's a, it's a, it's a good reason to open up the town plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a discreet element. It doesn't really necessarily touch anything else, just in there.
Yeah, I, I think it can be relatively, uh, you know, surgical or additive. It's not. It doesn't require the, every, the twenty twenty eight level of scrutiny of the whole plan. Because it's clearly missing. So, so we can add it, um, to shoehorn it in because there's a space there.
So I made a motion. If somebody wants to second it. Whatever, whatever Steve says it is and.
It's in the recording. It's on tape. I'm going to get it.
That's true. It's on tape. But yeah, so if you can clarify that, but we, we need to know what it is before we vote on it. So I, I think we can't go back to the video. Uh, so.
Well, I can simplify this by saying. Craft a motion by saying, um, make a motion that the planning commission embark on, uh, what, what is the right word? This chapter, uh.
Uh, facilities and utilities.
Creating a utilities and facilities chapter for our town plan.
Is it, it, is it just that or is it a capital planning or capital program? I think. One's five, one, one's five years and one's one year. And I think is program the, the more overarching one and plan is the one year. There are three things, capital plan, capital program and facilities and utilities plan.
So there's the capital program, which is the five. And then there's a cap, budget.
Okay, capital budget. So, so we really, we want to put in a capital program element. And one of the pieces of that is the utility and facilities plan. Correct?
It's fundamental, yes.
But it's the u- utility and facility component of the town plan that we're talking about?
Yeah.
So that should be the motion, right?
Yeah, yes.
Hmm.
Um, in order to. Create a capital program. The planning commission will embark on.
As, how about as a, as a first step to. Creating a capital budget and program in our town plan. The planning commission will. Create a utilities and facilities element in the town plan. So it, it's clear we're, we're not stopping with that. We know it's going to feed into the program.
Yeah.
Have you got that?
As a first step to create a capital budget and program. The planning commission will create a utilities and facilities element in the town plan for adoption by the select board.
That's my.
All right, Bob, do you? That's second. All right. Any discussion on that motion? All right. All those in favor of that motion is so, so brutally created.
Sure.
All right, thank you. What's so funny? I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get Christian involved. I'll, I'll whisper in a few select board ears and see whether I can, uh, whi- which way to put it in front of them. But I think first and foremost, it's going to get in front of them because it's going to be in the minutes. And that motion is going to be in the minutes. And so I, I will just hang, uh, the conversation on that to say, hey, look. Did you see? We did this. Um.
Yeah.
And I, I may even just to start it. I may do that as a, uh, you know, a public comment. Whether it's tomorrow or the next select board meeting and a public comment period of select board meeting, say, I just want to. Kick off this topic in an informal way. Uh, and then hopefully that'll get. Somebody who's interested on the select board to, to respond. Okay. Um, and Mary, do you think it's, um, should we just wait? The, the idea, enhance energy plan, anything to do with, with citing criteria? Should we leave that until after the? Energy com- the citing committee meets?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and we're on track for the twenty, is it twenty seven?
Twenty second.
Twenty second, okay. Beautiful.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, never mind.
Do we have anything else on the list? So we have, uh, the, the bucket of sort of the next bundle of zoning regs and subdivision regs. People feed any ideas from their notes to, to Stephen and we will start drafting up that bundle and. Working on it. Then we have the motion we just made about capital planning. Uh, we have a specific activity on that planning grant, um. And we'll wait on the, the energy stuff for the subcommittee to come back to us. Are there any other? Topics that we want to not forget, um, that need attention in the next few months here? Okay, I mean, I think that's good. I think we're, we're walking and chewing gum at the same time because we're doing the zoning regs and. Several town planning things, uh, at the same time. So that's good. Okay. How about minutes? Any, uh, take a motion, Jeff?
Motion approved.
To, so that's June tenth. Twenty twenty five minutes. Sec, you have a second? Um. Any comments on those minutes?
Yeah, I, I've got some typos, not a big deal. I, since Steve's, we never did designate Steve as our secretary. But since Steve's our designated secretary, I just didn't hand him. My edits, there's some confusing things to me, a couple of typos. It's stuff like when Mary Lane was supportive of changes, specifically noting the ADU's. Changes as filed would be ADU changes. It's getting rid of the possessive and so forth. Yeah, I can just, the only, the only question I had, uh, that may be controversial. Because there's, there's some repetition down on, uh, bottom of item three. Goodrich move, second white paper, the planning commission approved proposed bylaw amendments as amended regarding these final edits. I was confused. So by law specifically, what did we change? The zoning ordinance?
The land use regulations?
Yeah.
The land use regulations.
Which it's a, it's, is it, uh, is it, it's subdivision, not it's zone.
Um, land use regulations could apply to our zoning.
Can we be very specific and say land use regulations instead of by law?
Because I thought, I mean, if you look at the public, I just say the document that just came out for the select board's public hearing. It specifically says these two documents are being amended. The zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, we, currently there are the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations, two separate documents.
That's, so I just want to be clear.
I get you.
Uh, if you guys are okay, I'll just hand Steve my edits and.
Yeah, that's fine. Did we, I'm just looking. Do I see on these minutes specifically? The point, okay, so is that the, the third bullet there, delete three, two, B, five? Is that the one that the DRB requested? The one about saying total lots on a parcel or subdivision? Okay, so that is in there.
Yeah.
That was, that was a final verbal discussion that was then changed.
Yeah.
Okay.
It should be three point two.
I, I didn't catch that. You're right.
Um, three point two B parenthetical five. So I will clean that up.
All right. But that, yeah, that's the one. And, and Marsha asked specifically about that and, and was glad that we had. Uh, had done that. So that's good. Okay. Any other comments on these minutes? All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended? All right. Uh, Mary?
I love staying, I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so if, do we need to wait then? I don't want to be picky about this, but if we, if I've got three and an abstention. I have a quorum and if I have an abstention, can I get a three O vote? Yeah.
You need a majority of members. No, it's just about, it's a total majority.
We have to wait then.
So we have to wait.
All right, so roll, roll those edits in.
Yeah.
We'll take it, we'll take it up next time.
Doesn't care.
Because we need to, this one's, this is the official one where we voted to approve.
Yeah.
The changes, we gotta be, we gotta be, uh, following the rulebook here. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else for tonight? Any public wandering that wants to talk about anything?
No. Surprisingly not.
Amazing. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Good night.
Thank you all. You have a good night.
That's my, my talking point to the legislature.
All right, I'm going to end the meeting. Um, everyone's gone, never mind. And for.